Yeah, I'd like to move us down. We're gonna skip over the auditor's comments and the other commissioners' actions right now and go to the bottom line there. We're scheduled to come on at 10:30 of KJG Architecture. Now, I should preface this with a comment or two, and that is that I really credit Mike Thomas for getting me to think along a different line on this. Just in casual conversation, I believe Mike expressed to either my wife or son concerns that he had about the location of the proposed jail out here and the, it might be incorrect on this if I'm saying it wrong, but on congestion of traffic in that area, which is something that I have always worried about. And so, it got me thinking about backing up and relooking possibly at the whole project. And I apologize to my two cohorts up here that they're kinda in this blind from what I'm wanting to present here right now, but in the interest of being open door on everything, I have not talked to them about this. So they're, yeah, so they're seeing this all for the first time, and I have taken the liberty of asking Mr. Kelly Good right here, who is an architect from West Lafayette and a Carroll County businessman and pays a great deal of Carroll County property tax, to review something that we have kind of, I believe, overlooked, and this is a completely different thing. Originally on, we said, we asked to have a look at the present jail and to see how we could work into it, and the response that we got back was pretty well, forget it, you know, we need to completely go new. And I asked Kelly to take a look, Mr. Good to take a look, and that seems odd to me, to Mr. Good, but anyway, had our present jail and see if there wasn't any use that could be made of it and how we could go from there on to get this thing going. Now, I made a comment earlier that government moves the speed of Glacier, and I'm afraid that our jail project is just pretty well running clear off the track here of getting going. So, this what I'm giving you here is my handwritten things that I gave to Kelly, saying, these are my concerns, and I believe that they're both yours. And I know that Steve, a couple of things that Steve here has brought up to me and brought up to all of us, that A, we wanted a jail that was not, in Steve's words, not a Cadillac, but a Chevrolet that could meet all of our needs, but didn't have to have every bell and whistle possible. And also, recently, Steve had brought up that we have a real problem with juveniles. So, my looking at it was, can the existing jail be used for either worker release or juvenile detention, or maybe both? But I'm not sure that that can be given, given the requirements of juvenile. I'm not sure both can be accommodated, but I'm not sure both can't be accommodated. Now, I'm gonna pass this down. This needs to go to the newspaper if we can send it down. Kelly, the lady right next to you there.
I think he knows who I am.
You made these copies for the rest of this?
She can borrow mine if you want.
No, well, okay, give her yours like I do. All that goes are, is just what I, to show you what that I gave to Kelly to look at. And with that, I'll introduce Mr. Kelly Good right here, who is, as I said, an architect from West Lafayette and a Carroll County business owner and tax payer. So Kelly, will you wanna take the floor and just tell it?
Yeah. Have you been hiring one of those contracts?
I don't know, that's a good question.
I mean, I don't wanna step on anybody's foot.
Steve is bringing up, are we under, we are under contract with an architect, and it's just in violation of that. Are we, Kelly?
So I'm gonna let your attorney answer, but right now, you've not hired me. I know there's, I know there's another architect here that has looked at something, so I've done this because I'm a local architect and I obviously have succeed. So, let me just go ahead and start, we've got nine topics, can you pull it open? So, I'll start, so I've really got nine topics to go over. One is, is why are we here, which Bill explained, I'll get into that in a minute. Our experience in jail design, we teamed with a national expert or regional expert. We're gonna go over a little bit of adventure's experience. Our understanding of the project, which is Commissioner Brown gave us. And then, we've got one of the, our past experience with jail, and then potential design options that we showed you, our evaluation of the existing structure, the purpose and comments about that, and then what a potential cost would be. So, let me just go over first, why are we here? So, we were, we were charged with, the only question was, is can the existing jail, we add it on to accomplish what we want as a means of service. So, we went and toured the jail and evaluated it, and we believe right now, from the budget we heard, that it can be accomplished. No exhaustive study's been done, we are gonna present a floor plan today, show you some past jail experience, and tell you what we think you can do, but no study, no exhaustive study has been done. So, if you can, if you give me a few minutes, I just wanna introduce the team, 'cause all of us are gonna talk. I'm Kelly Good with KJG Architecture from the Licensed Architect in Indiana. And then Jeremy?
Jeremy Duff, Vice President, KJG Architecture, also Carroll County Resident, Structural Engineering.
Anola, Architect with 27 years of experience, we're working on also jails and prisons around the state of Indiana and Illinois.
Corey Layle with Venture Architects out of Waukesha, he's a councilman, Principal at Venture, 25 years experience in architecture.
Let me go to the next slide, so this isn't us right now, let's go to the next slide. This isn't us right now trying to sell you guys on KJG. So, I'm gonna get, just real quick, we're a local firm, we've been in business for 25 years, we have 32 employees, we're licensing multiple firms to do work through that. We're one of the larger architecture firms here in town. I could go on forever about it, 'cause I'm passionate about it, but with that, I'm gonna have him switch to the next slide. And then, why have we teamed with Venture? And the reason we teamed with Venture is, we believe they're nationally known, regionally known, and they've done hundreds of jails and community police stations, so they're experts at this, and we've worked with them for over 10 years, so it's a natural fit. We've got the Frankford Police Station, it's a BOT being delivered, started construction in time, we've done the Wyoming State, among other projects. So, with that said, I'm gonna let Corey give a little bit, quick overview of his company, and then he's gonna show some of the work that they've done in the past, just to start to get a feel for what we can do with the whole project.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to, I, I'm not sure that the board, this was by soliciting by the board, and I think because we have a contract with an architect, I think we need to step, step back. I'm not saying no, but I think we need to step back. I would like for time to review our contract with Elvatus. I think that we don't wanna mislead the presenters that we haven't solicited this in any way, and that we want time to review this before we continue the presentation.
Okay, when you say review this, what is this?
Whether or not this is in any way a violation of our contract with Elvatus.
Okay. Now, we, we, we're not entered into a contract with KJG, we have, we have not paid them, paid some dollars. So, how can we be in violation?
I don't know if we are. It's that we're crossing, we're crossing a line here, maybe, in receiving this information without communication with our contract partner, Elvatus, in advance. I, I don't know that they would have any objection to it, but I have communicated with them that there's gonna be a presentation by another architect today, so I would, I think we have, at least at the minimum courtesy of letting Elvatus know that if the board wants to receive this presentation, because the board, the board isn't involved, it's the board deciding its agenda, and I think by entertaining this at this point without communicating with Elvatus, we would like to hear this presentation, I think at least it's a, it's expected as a courtesy and maybe protect our legal access as well.
Okay. As I said in my introduction here, and you weren't in here, I don't think Ted, but this is not being at the request of these two gentlemen at all, because I wanted to do it open door and do it right in here so that everybody hears it. I'm not calling them, I'm not saying, hey, here's something I want done, or here is a different proposal, a different route, or anything like that, because of open door law. So...
Well, I wouldn't recommend that the board solicit this presentation until we've contacted Elvatus.
Is Elvatus been asking here to talk today? Because we're ready to present if you want, and this is a different facility than a new facility.
So, my concern right now is, if we don't room with these people, and we're already in contract with Elvatus, what kind of relationship did we room with Elvatus? They have worked their butts off with us to help us get to where we're at. We started twice. By doing this, we're going back to...
Freezing.
We've already invested a lot of money with them, and I've heard news that they've got news for us on the way to help fund the new jail. And I've heard from, I think it was a council member also, that they're sending works. I understand it's not been going very fast, and I understand where he's coming from, but every time we turn around, there's always, we got one or two ducks that like to run around sideways, and I think we're close of getting our ducks. I really didn't, I don't know about Lauren's going, but to me, I think we're stepping on the ball on the toes.
Really what?
Stepping on their toes.
I didn't know if Kenny had thought about this, but I'm kind of surprised you didn't tell me before, and your agenda, could possibly have.
I did talk to Ted about it, and Ted did say that there, that he was concerned about our existing contract, and I talked to Kelly about it. My, my view of way is that we're looking at it, okay, we asked Elvatus from the very beginning about the county jail that we had, existing jail. I don't want this to come into being a big argument here, but we asked Elvatus to give us that, and I asked Tobe then for us to, for what that he had in his files down there as far as their survey of the jail and how, how it could be used or not used. And basically, all we got was, no, that jail isn't worth anything, might as well bulldoze it, we'd need to start all over again, and they'll do it. That was the position that I got on that jail down there, you know, the jail doors don't work right, and all these different things, so...
Commissioner Robert, how about if, how about we just pause it and we can put it on hold, because it sounds like there's some people uncomfortable. If they hadn't been informed, then that is...
They had nothing.
So, let's put it on hold, and we're happy to come back and present whenever it works for you guys. So, if that's the best approach, I'm on board.
I appreciate that, 'cause I don't wanna ruin relations with either one of them.
I think that that is, that's fine. I appreciate you offering. Kelly's already put in quite a bit of time into this, but if we, if it would be better for us to make some decisions before he speaks again, I think that's fine. I, myself, speaking only for Bill Brown, darn tired of all the...
The wandering ducks.
Uh-huh.
The wandering ducks.
Okay, you're wandering ducks. I'll go with that analogy, that's... This glacier is not moving at all. We're stuck right where we are right now, and it's time to do something, and I think we have a potential to do something. And we have, one, what, three times at least, asked for a reduction in this project so it would come, so the council could fund it. I haven't got much, and I'll miss, be real truthful, is the last time we had a presentation with, from Elvatus, and they came back to us and said, well, we could do the exterior of the building different, we'll go with the steel outside and all that. I'm thinking, that's what we asked you for in the first place, was the Chevrolet, not the Cadillac, and what we got was Cadillac, and so, I'm unhappy with that. We have been through every process that has been advised of us, committee to select an architect, of the studies, of the studies of the land, the studies of, I mean, every study down the line, except we've never done a study of the jail that we have now.
Well, they did, they was...
They did, they had a figure.
They had a figure, and it was just gonna cost just as much as it was to build a new one if we would've started a new one, when we could have. Then there was concerns of having to shut the roads off, where are we gonna put our inmates, where are we gonna store the construction sites?
No answers to any of them.
Yeah, there wasn't room down there to put it.
There is still.
I mean, the building itself, but what are you gonna do with the material and stuff that come in, and where you go to staging area? Staging area, and how long do we have to...
We're gonna have to work that... Yes, we believe.
Thing that you gotta keep in mind, if you're gonna do anything with that existing jail down there, it's gonna have to be a part of today's jail standards, and it's gonna be quite difficult to do with the situation that you've got with the plumbing and all the other problems that you got down there, the age of the equipment that's in there. This, what you're proposing here today, in my opinion, okay, as a former jail inspector and consultant of another engineering firm, is you're talking about a completely different project than what you are with the jail.
Sure.
Now, if you're gonna take bids, which you've already did, you've already had companies come in here and say, hey, here's what we're gonna propose, and you chose a company, and I think without talking to them and giving them the respect that you already signed a contract with, better beware, that's all I can, that's all I can say. And no disrespect to these gentlemen, I think their intent is good, I think they're wanting to do the best for Carroll County that they can do, and I appreciate them saying, and we probably better put this hole on hold, because I believe there's a potential here for live building.
I appreciate that. So...
I say we need to have Ted talk to our current contract agent, and then he can come back to us with the answer. I mean, there's, well, they're here today, I've seen them sitting out there, so I don't know if they was gonna present something with Tobe today or not, or...
Oh, they're gentle. Ted's now left, I don't know why.
He's back to work on...
Too many big items today on the schedule. My concern with this is, how do I communicate with you two on this whole thing and still keep it open door? And we have to do that. Yes.
Have a work session.
Pardon me?
Have a work session. No, no decisions can be made, but you can chew on everything.
Okay, when we get Ted back, I guess, we'll ask, I'll structure it, work session.
It's just 48 hours notice.
It's just like a resident meeting?
We, yes, but we need to kick this project in the rear end and get something going. I mean, every day is rising and rising, and...
I've been in the same time, Bill.
Yeah.
Government moves really slow.
Well, I don't, I think we've moved way too slow.
Well, if they're willing to step down and come back later, I think we can move on with our next agenda first.
Well, we can, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a work session, I guess I'd like for Ted to say, tell me how we can, how we do that. And then, I'm going to apologize to Kelly and all the people that are here, because we are not going ahead with this, hearing the presentation. I haven't seen his presentation. I haven't, I haven't seen, seen this, nor gone through it, so it's gonna be seen at the same time you're seeing it. Ted, a suggestion has been made that we have a work session to determine. I'm concerned that we have information, that I have information, that I have a plan, how to move this thing forward, that I can't communicate with these two, you know, I can't call them up and talk to them on the phone or anything like that. I'm ready to see this thing moving, and it's not moving, and I'm not happy with that at all, and so...
It's not permitted, it's all up to state.
What's not permitted?
Discussion of public business, other than the context of something that's under the executive session statute.
What about a work session, is that permitted?
Those are open, actually.
Well, I don't mind it being open, what I, I've, I don't mind anything being open, I just wanna know how we're gonna move it ahead, how we're gonna get this going. How can I talk to them about, for example, doing something different?
I mean, it'd be a special meeting, you know, you can set a time, if you're only gonna discuss this.
So if I say we're only gonna discuss the jail project, that could...
Yeah, it, it's gotta be open, though.
That's fine.
Yeah, sure. And, I mean, who do you want to be at that, and who you've got here? This is just maybe not the time to do this, 'cause I think we, we so courtesy and not the legal obligation to tell that we're entertaining another...
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I have told everybody from the very beginning, I've never built a 16 to 20 million dollar building, so this is a project, it's way above what I've ever done. But all I know is, it's time for us to do something. The bottom stop right here...
You can use the time that you've got right here, and set a time, if you wanna have this after we've gotten notified, Elvatus, and that you want to entertain this other proposal, if you want it, if the board wants to.
Yeah, if the board wants to. I, I, well, I don't know if that's the time to entertain another proposal, it's a time for us to think about where we are and where we're going.
I think we need to have another meeting with council, Elvatus, and us, and find out where we're appearing, going, because I believe Elvatus has a kind of a plan to help us fund it. That's, that's our issue right now, is funding it and how we're going to fund it. And council president back there, he's sitting there, I think they've been working on it, and I think one of their members has a plan, plus what I've heard through the grapevine that Elvatus might have.
Okay. I don't, I don't think there's any, any problem telling, letting the community know that the bill operate, bill operating transfer is being looked at, and we had a meeting scheduled with just, with just the chairman and Elvatus and legal counsel and the accountant that had, that had postponed, somebody had a conflict, and that's, that's coming up pretty soon. That's not a public meeting, 'cause there's no majorities of anybody. So, my, my suggestion is wait until you have that discussion with, and all of us is involved with that, and that's March, the, March 3rd.
March 3rd?
Yeah, at 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Yeah.
And if we need to do it, we can probably meet, we can, the 21st, after our, we can set the date if we need to, on 21st, and have a meeting the 23rd, 24th, or 25th.
Why don't we have a meeting then, through the 7th to the 11th?
Well, and then that time for everybody to get their information in and find out all the legal stuff?
Well, I don't know what you're doing, you're just discussing it, I mean, you're not gonna be bringing other people in necessarily, I mean...
The March 3rd meeting is gonna be...
Well, March 3rd is, is, was a third meeting, it's, it is just a small third, you know, so we don't, probably like the open, open door law. So...
But I could communicate with my fellow commissioners on, during the week of the 7th through the 11th, what happened at the third meeting.
Yes.
March, just, March 8th?
4 o'clock. March 8th at 4 o'clock? Lauren?
Do we need that much time? Do you wanna do it right before your March 7th, the regular meeting?
Before March 17th?
Without your meeting on the 3rd?
I think it's 10 a.m.
Then, I can do the 3rd.
Yeah, we have our 7th meeting. All right.
You already have a meeting, you can do it before the regular, before everything gets going, or at the end of time, or...
Now, it's gonna be open to the public.
Yeah, I want it to be open to the public.
So, we could just do it, we could put it on the agenda first?
Just put, put it on the agenda for March 7th.
Okay.
And, don't let anything encroach on your time.
Oh, that's a great chicken.
Yeah, that's the first meeting of the month.
So, I mean, we could put it at the end of the meeting on the 7th, and get anybody in and out.
At least maybe on the 3rd, Bill, I, I'm not trying to be flip about this, but maybe you'll have more assurance that there's another solution being found, and a lot of this has to do with the elephant in the room, and that's inflation, you know, and none of us...
Yeah, sorry.
Put it on the agenda, March 7th agenda, but that's...
Sure. March 7th, put this on the agenda, jail discussion, is that what needs to be laid?
Sure.
Yep.
Probably do it the first thing, that way it doesn't get skewed, you know, I don't know. Well, there's nothing after. Right now, we have a training for it, maybe, but that's the only reason it was so short. I mean, there's big discussions of it. I mean, we took a lot of things off and put it on the 7th, and then you also have the health department coming back, so she has to have the 1005, so...
She has to walk.
Have the early one.
Right. The health department does?
I said we just do it, we get time to discuss. We won't be rushed for time on.
Do it at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, that'd be my suggestion.
Okay.
Kinda like what you wanted to do today?
Pardon me?
Kinda like what we did today, or you wanted to do today?
Says we only got two things left on the agenda now, are we gonna take the recess and come back, or...
Yeah, we should.
'Cause we got the training board. Are you, well, are we violating any laws by not starting at 11? I don't know. And I have people coming, they're not coming now, so, I mean, we just got a few things to go over, it's not that big.
Mine should only take 10 minutes.
What's that?
I said mine should only take 10 minutes.
Well, so we'll go, we'll continue the commissioner meeting and then go to the training, it's all right with you? Okay. Kelly, can I have you come back at a different time?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for coming and preparing all this. Thank you for coming and preparing all this. Okay, so we're ready to go back. You have a couple things, okay. So, order your bath, we're ready to go on again.
Okay, um, the two that have done our lawn care have, um, gave me new contracts there. The very same thing as last year. They did not raise the prices or anything, they just wanted to make sure that they could still continue for this year. So I...
I was in a, basically a two-year contract with both of them, and that's up, but I'm pretty happy with who we have. I have no, no complaints or nothing, no one says anything.
Well, it wasn't two years, then you went to one year, you know, this is...
So I'm gonna make a motion to go ahead and continue with the two providers that we have.
Motion second to continue on, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, got that done?
This one is, uh, this has already been approved, this means your signature and it'll be... That's the E B C contract for that, and there's just one signature there.
Kelly, you aren't gonna offend me a bit if you wanna go ahead and go and not, uh, listen to all this, uh...
I might learn something, but I, I will, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other thing I need is a date...
This doesn't have a place for us to sign.
The other thing I need is a date to do personnel evaluations. And that is an executive session, um, for your, your department heads. And we've got a lot going on.
Well, we might have to set it out there a ways, but we need to set it...
Set a date, okay.
Um, by the time you get our paperwork and we do the evaluation, first meeting in April, after the meeting? Is that too far out? I don't know, I think that is. That way we're already all here, we don't have to wait until, like, y'all working forward to them. By that time, they want to go home anyway. Is that good with you guys?
Well, it's gonna take like twenty minutes for people to personate that day, and play a good afternoon in it.
Yeah, right, yeah, right, they're on it.
Okay, April fourth?
Is that, is that okay with you, Dylan? Lauren?
Afternoon, Mike.
Finally, you're on it, what'd you say, to the board? April fourth?
That's right.
The next thing is the E M A grants, and he is here. Uh, he just would like to request permission to apply for the grants that he has listed, that's reimbursable. I think that's the thing.
This is a normal grant that I usually come before you every year and ask. The home experience grant is reimbursable, the two emergency management program grants, the one competitive and the one is my salary grant, and then the hazardous material grant.
Make it look important, for saying.
And those are all reimbursable grants.
Do we have a copy or something?
No, you don't need a sign.
It's him just going after him.
It's just me going after the grants.
Because no one can really go apply for grants, of course.
Yeah. You want a second just to... Okay, got a motion in a second, uh, I'll allow, uh, to, uh, mine to, uh, apply for grants, right?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And any matching ones, of course, I'll come back and ask you before I do that.
Thanks, Mike. We gotta do the name on the bribery board, but Ted's in the other room, so go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, what do you have, Bill? Do I have the land of the Carroll Manor?
Yeah.
That should, consider if we're gonna lease that for...
Oh, the farm?
Yeah. For this getting time.
Under, understanding that it might be...
Yeah, I don't think it puts a crop out and nothing moves. Or something does move, then it's straight crops.
Right.
How are you gonna handle it, are you gonna not lease it, lease part of it?
Not a big deal for the county, but, but it could be a real eyesore to the county.
You know what, we'll, we'll know more March seventh, so we can do that then.
Well, I'm hoping that...
I'm hoping, Lauren.
We put it off.
Um, we could, can we like reassure him that if we do go with anybody, it'll be with him?
Well, that's kind of been the ask.
Right.
Definitely is, but it's a small track.
Right.
I look to come down to the bigger sort of ones, I don't, I don't, we wouldn't, the ones I could do. The next thing I have is the Tribute Center. The what, the Tribute Center?
Tribute Center.
Yes, and we know of the, uh, cares committee and the cares committee wouldn't provide funding out of the cares money because originally we agreed full members, we don't want to be a total agreement, to do something, and it wasn't set up for the purpose, uh, that we originally stated. So we can't use the cares money, it could be, could be another. The only thing I thought was, we have available added funds for the number seven. If they're interested in that facility. It's still, uh, either served this morning or somewhere over here, that they've had an offer.
Alright, potential.
Potential. And I talked to the local, we were here last Thursday, Friday, and she said, then it wasn't offered.
She said it is offered?
She said last Thursday, she said they've showed it, people are, so people are interested. They have been offered through, that I heard, there's other realtors, first, trying to push as possible, offer kind of, and...
Is this in business?
I have no idea, me as far as the offer?
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Well, my, my thinking is, are we bumping up business out from coming to Carroll County if we do jump in?
Probably somebody goes to the partners, huh?
It could be, I think it talks about like an activity, so, like, if, you know, like, parties and stuff.
So what, why do you, why do you, what do we wanna do?
Well, so, I mean, so, you know, if, if we're interested in that cell, they serve the purpose of...
On backup nine-one-one.
Possibly, yeah, nine-one-one, or main nine-one-one and backup. And that would get the nine-one-one out of the jail, a little nicer facility, a little room. You go through the...
I went through the...
Yeah. Steve, you go through the... It's about potential. And honestly, putting a cooler, putting...
On the outside?
Yeah, outside we get the small stuff.
Also, it's cool. Well, yeah, I don't know. I imagine we have this there, a corner, a side.
There's land there. If she put a large supply of the cooler, this grant money, she, you know, sold space and land, that's...
Grant, grant money. And then it's like forty-five dollars a square foot, if I recall?
That's what I figured, that's why it's up to state.
So everybody knows we're talking about the, used to be a church out here.
It was a tribute center, but it's trying to get on its seal. Church of Christ and that Tribute Center, it's been for sale since the first year.
And we're u, talking about using it for a potential, uh, uh, board, uh, office for the coroner. Uh, is it for the E M A?
E M A.
Emergency Management Office, and, uh, potential for the, uh, nine-one-one?
Either backup or...
Either backup or actually...
I don't know if you've been in this, but for the...
Oh, I've been in there lately, yeah.
And it's a issue, you know, too, I don't know. Whether you use it or not. It's a big question.
I know Mike talked to me about it a while back, he was working on...
Mike Thatcher?
Yeah, he's like...
Okay, okay, I couldn't see him back there.
He asked me about it, and he said he was gonna draw up some plans or work on something that he could, he said he could make it work.
There's storage area there, and then there's also, it is pretty large open there.
So it could be a meeting group there and... Mike, when you, you've looked at it now and, and as far as, basically, it's a big one of, there isn't much anteroom to it, is there?
No, the, the office is down the sides and that, what we could do is, you know how they got the archways?
Yeah.
Every so often from, depending on which way you go, there's a bunch of different variations. If you block off from one of those and build a wall there, you're gonna get a couple X amount of storage area, actual climate controlled storage area. Um, that would prolong the P P E and all the stuff that I've got stored all throughout the basement, along with a lot of the other stuff. What Commissioner Hilton was talking about earlier, uh, the cares committee stuff, was that money that was set aside was to build storage, a storage or a warehouse unit for all the equipment that was purchased, uh, the trailers and all that other stuff. There is, from what I was looking at, you could do a sixty by eighty on the west side, northwest side, or about a sixty by a hundred on the side that has the concrete, which is the opposite side.
For like a pole bar?
For like a pole bar, for the stores. To, to store the trailers and the, I'm gonna, and stuff like that. And then we could, there's just a whole bunch of variations, and that, nothing's down in concrete. And that, but then you could also put the secure, you know, build another concrete area inside one of those to where you could put the cooler in for, so we could start taking care of our own system. And not running into the storage.
Here is a problem there, isn't it?
No, yeah, we're paying a lot of money out right now. How many bodies have you had in the last three months, ten?
Since the beginning of the year, we've had twelve.
Twelve that we've had to put in another county?
Since January first.
Well, to stop anybody from dying for a while.
But that would be nicer.
Tell me about funding for this, Mike.
So, as far as funding is, some of the initial stuff, we would have to, like, to purchase the building, we could use added funds or whatever you guys decide. I do have the money from the cares committee that I could use to build the warehouse part.
You could build the warehouse part?
With the cares committee money, then we've got to...
I missed the word there, I'm sorry.
So, when the county received that cares money, that we...
Cares money.
That we originally received, there's two hundred and fifty-something left.
Okay.
It was agreed that we could use it for warehousing for the equipment that was purchased.
Right.
So we could use that for warehousing. We can't use it to purchase the building. Um, so any modifications that we would have to use to the building, we'd have to do some with county general, or whatever you guys decide. Moving nine-one-one or backup nine-one-one, we could look at some money from state through nine-one-one, and there are different grants than that. And then to actually outfit part of it, that, the hazardous material grant and some other grants, I can work on slowly. We don't have to do it all in one shot. We can get, we can slowly progress it and work a lot of stuff to build up through grants.
I had a council member, probably, who read it all, said that he's in a spirit, there's four guarantees that they would use Randy Day's on the body, but...
Randy Day.
And I got no idea about that.
Yeah, he came up to me and said...
No, but you helped me out a lot there on the warehouse part of those. There's room for it, something.
There's room for it.
There's room for it, you got money for it.
Talking to area plans, I just gotta make sure that whatever is determined to be the front of that building, that we meet the set off.
The current zoning is local business, and the setbacks for local business are a lot more, uh, less restricted than they are for urbans, S one and all that, so there'd be quite a bit of revenue as well.
Okay. Well, I think it's a good potential, so, but now we need to, we have our, that's our, I got that, we're just talking my head. Yeah. Appraisals, we have to have two appraisals, because it's a...
Did that answer your question?
And where would we get the money for that, to get the appraisal?
We're gonna ask the council for it.
Right, what did we use last time?